Good afternoon. It is Thursday, November 30th, 2023, 4:30, and I am calling to order the planning commission meeting. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the October 26, 2023 meeting. Are there corrections or changes? Have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been approved. Next item on the agenda is the plat to consider for approval, the final plat of Alliance Bank First Edition City Report.
Thank you. The applicant in this case is Bob Ruder, and he is the regional president of Alliance Bank. The bank controls a half block of property, and a lot of this is going to be identical to what you heard last month. So, there are, the ownership is under three different names. It's Alliance Bank, it's F and M Alliance Bank, and it's Farmers and Merchants State Bank of New Ulm. Legal description is lots eight through 14 blocks, 62 north of Center Street. Street address is 314 to 340 North Minnesota Street. The property is generally located east of North Minnesota Street and between Third and Fourth North Streets. Deadline for a decision on the plat is January 21st, 2024. Land use designation in the comprehensive plan is downtown. Surrounding land uses in the comp plan, northeast and south is downtown, west is downtown and park slash open space. Zoning designation is B4, which is Central Business District. Surrounding zoning, north, south, and west is B4. East is B4 and B1. Current site use, we have the Alliance Bank Building, a drive-through and parking lot. And then we have the former Alliance Bank Building, drive-through and parking. Might note that the former building has been sold, and I think they're in the process of renovating it for its future use. Current area uses, to the north, we have a restaurant and apartment. To the east, we have two single-family dwellings and the Germastrozzi condominiums. To the south, we have the vacant Wells Fargo Building and the Kiesling House. And to the west, we have various downtown buildings, parking in the Glockenspiel. Notice, none is required. Public comment, none to date. Regarding park area within the platted area, the comprehensive plan does not recommend a park in that area. So, this property is located in the city's grid street section. The platted area totals 1.34 acres and consists of a half-block of property. The property consists of seven lots, five parcels. The plat will divide the property into two lots. The platted area is surrounded by three streets and an alley. Plat would divide the property as follows. Lot one would have 23,892 square feet, that's .55 acres, and that's the location of the former bank building. Lot two would have 34,254 square feet, that's .79 acres, and that's the location of the new bank building. The new property line separating the two lots would generally follow the south, drive-through gutter line, and then transition to being one foot off of the retaining wall located in mid-block. The retaining wall separates the two drive-throughs on the east side of the property. The south drive-through has a higher elevation than the former north drive-through. There are no lot standards in the B4 zoning district, so we have no minimum width, depth, lot area. And the purpose of the plat is to facilitate the sale of lot one. There were three conditions that were identified at last month's meeting. Status of those conditions, number one was to pay the plating fee at $260. That payment, it says payment pending, that payment has been made. Number two is provide an electronic file, the plat in AutoCAD 2016 or newer format. Notice has been provided to the land surveyor, and that is something that is always addressed by the land surveyor. And then number three, the owner will provide a recorded copy of an access easement, allowing the owner of lot two to utilize a portion of lot one to perform maintenance on the retaining wall. We have received a signed and recorded copy of the easement, so that condition has been addressed. There are three attachments. Attachment one is the final plat, and that's what you will see on the video monitor. Attachment two is a site location map, and attachment three are ground-level photographs, and there are four or five of those. Staff would recommend approval of the final plat, and there are no conditions at this point in time since approval of the final plat, since it complies with city code requirements. There are no recommended conditions, and so that would leave us to a motion to approve or to deny the request. That would conclude the staff report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the city regarding this? Okay. If no one has any questions, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the final plat of Alliance Bank First Edition with conditions.
Second.
Have a second?
Second.
Second? I have a motion and a second to approve with conditions. Is there any further discussion?
Okay, there will be no conditions, because they've addressed all of the stated conditions, yeah.
All right.
We have nothing to worry about.
Even though your note says with condition?
Right.
Okay, but that's changed.
What happened is they addressed some of the conditions since we prepared the agenda.
All right. So, I have a motion to approve. Dave, will you amend your motion to say without condition?
Yeah, I'll amend that to a motion to recommend approval of the final plat of Alliance Bank First Edition.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion has been carried. Next item on the agenda is the simple lot division. Consider for approval the simple lot division request by Wade Besmer on behalf of Judith A. Besmer Trust.
Okay. This legal description of this property is lot two, block one, Besmer subdivision. The street address is 12846 Shag Road. The property location, it is located east of the municipal city limits of New Ulm, approximately a quarter, or a fifth of a mile, south of the Cottonwood River Bridge on Highway 14, which is on the south side of New Ulm. The property is east of Highway 14 and west of Shag Road. Now, the basis for our review of this request, since you have probably noted that this is outside the city limits, is that as permitted by state statutes, the city of New Ulm extended their subdivision regulations into portions of Cottonwood and Milford Township in 2003. And the proposed simple lot division is within this area, and as a result, it is subject to the city's subdivision regulations and subdivision approval process. The property is actually located in Cottonwood Township. Deadline for a decision on this matter is January 20th, 2024. As far as land use designation, this particular property is outside of the area covered by the 2007 comprehensive plan. Same thing goes for the areas north, south, and east. West, that property is designated for park and open space, and that's where the DNR headquarters is located. The zoning designation, city of New Ulm has no designations in this area since it's not subject to city zoning. The Brown County zoning designation for the property is A1, which is agriculture. The surrounding zoning, the city has, to the west, is AOS, which is agriculture, open space, and Brown County is A1 agriculture, and that's north, south, and east. Current site use, the Besmer Trust has a farm site with a single-family residence and outbuildings. There also is a Walden property, which is located to the west of the Besmer property, and that consists, located on that particular lot is a single-family residence and two outbuildings. Current land uses to north and south are single-family residences on lots smaller than two and a half acres. To the east is a single-family residence on lots larger than two and a half acres, and to the west is the DNR Southern Minnesota headquarters. No notice is required, no public comment is required, and none has been received to date. The Besmer Trust is proposing to subdivide lot two into two parcels. Lot two has a total lot area of 2.52 acres. One of the two parcels that would result from this subdivision, labeled parcel B, would be sold to Dale Walden. He is the adjoining property owner to the west, and we provided the parcel number of that particular property. City staff has reviewed this request with the Brown County Recorder and the Brown County Zoning Administrator. Parcel B is approximately 50 feet wide by 170.9 feet long. The total parcel area is .2 acres or 8,607 square feet. And you can see attachment one D and one E for an indication of where that property is located. The proposed lot division qualifies for a simple lot division for the following reasons. Number one, no new building lot would be created by the subdivision. That's in accordance with Chapter 10 of our zoning ordinance. And number two, the proposed lot line is parallel to the existing rear lot line of the Walden property. The proposed property line will maintain the required county setbacks from existing structures. The proposed new legal descriptions for the Besmer Trust property would be as follows. Parcel A would be lot two, block one, Besmer subdivision in Section 4, Township 110 North, range 30 West, excepting the westerly 50 feet thereof as measured perpendicularly to the most westerly line of said parcel, Brown County, Minnesota. Parcel B, the legal description, would be the westerly 50 feet of lot two, block one, Besmer subdivision, as measured perpendicularly to the westerly line thereof in Section 4, Township 110 North, range 30 West, Brown County, Minnesota. There are no city utilities that currently serve either parcel A or parcel B. Attachments, we have attachment one is the applicant's letter and lot division drawing. Attachment two is the location map, and might have John just point out where these properties are and in relationship to, to the city.
Sure. So, this, this black and white dash line that you see in the aerial photo, that is actually, actually the municipal city limits of New Ulm, so it does include the DNR headquarters building south of the Cottonwood River. And then you can see it, it runs along Highway 15 and then cuts back across over here to the east. So, can see this is just outside of the city limits.
And so, the proposed division would, on that map, would be?
So, the proposed division would be right where this blue dashed line is, and what they're proposing is that this 50 by 170.9 feet would then get combined with this Walden property to the west.
Thank you. Staff would, okay, attachment three is the zoning map, attachment four is the site map, and attachment, and the site map perhaps shows the property from a little bit closer angle. And attachment five is various ground-level photos. And we tried to depict on the photos, red line where the approximate location of the property line. Staff would recommend approval since it complies with city code requirements. Staff would recommend the following conditions. Number one, the lot division would be effective upon the filing of the resolution approving this request to the Brown County Recorder's office. Two, any structures built on either parcel A or parcel B shall follow setbacks regulated by the Brown County zoning ordinance. And three, parcel B will be combined with the Walden property to form one parcel of property for tax and building purposes. The future legal description of the property would be as follows. Lot three, I believe it should be block one, Valley View Edition in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter, Section 3, and in the east half in the northeast quarter of Section 4, Township 110, range 30, should be west, and the westerly 50 feet of lot two, block one, Besmer subdivision, as measured perpendicularly to the most westerly line thereof, Brown County, Minnesota. Then we have two motions to approve the request and to deny it. That would conclude the staff report.
Thank you.
Before we get into discussion, since we do have some newer folks on the planning commission, and we haven't run into a situation where we've had to do a simple lot division or a property subdivision outside of the city limits, Dave, can you provide some background on the reasoning that we have our subdivisions, you know, extended outside of the city limits?
Okay. State statute, as was mentioned in the staff report, there's a provision which allows cities to extend their subdivision regulations outside of the city up to two miles. In the case, the city of New Ulm has taken this option, but we did not extend it two miles, rather, we had it mere the area that we're permitted to provide electrical service to. And so consequently, the, the line for that is, you know, it makes its way across the western side of, of the city. It's not a uniform two miles. The reason that the city decided to exercise that option was primarily due to the fact that, one, we have limited opportunities when it comes to space for future development, and secondly, to try to reserve property for future development and to reserve property that is in a developable condition. The county in its A1 zone has a minimum requirement of two and a half acres per lot. Well, when the city gets to, you know, a location like that where there's a bunch of two and a half acre lots, you know, the cost of extension of utilities and the ability to further subdivide that property maybe into smaller, more urban-sized parcels becomes more difficult. And so, that was the primary reason why the city took that action.
Thank you. Say anything else?
Does the city provide electrical to that portion?
I...
We provide, I believe, we provide water to the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources building, but they also have solar out there, and I think they're also on their own sewer system.
Yeah, I think they're on septic. As far as these two properties are concerned, no, I don't believe, I believe they're served by REA.
Are there any questions for the city regarding division?
You know, I might note that the reason for the, this extension was not for these types of cases necessarily.
Thank you.
But rather for larger parcels of property. It's just that this property is within that area, and so we have to go through this process.
Okay. If there are no further questions, comments, it's pretty cut and dried. Do we have a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the conditions of the simple lot division of the property legally described as lot two, block one, Besmer subdivision in Section 4, Township 109 North, range 30 West, Brown County, Minnesota, with the follow-on legal descriptions as noted.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next on the agenda is the comprehensive plan progress report.
Okay, we are still in the process of reviewing the draft comprehensive plan. That's actually taken longer than we anticipated. One of the things is we keep having projects that are coming in and other items that we have to attend to more immediate, but we're still hoping to have something to the project steering committee, probably in later December, maybe early January, for your review.
So, do you still anticipate this going to the city council in January?
I would think we're probably more in that February range right now.
Okay, okay.
I, I think, as John indicated, we keep on running into having to do other, more immediate tasks, and we'd like to get this finished as quickly as possible.
I understand projects incoming business is good. I can't, can't fault that, but we can't let this slide too much further.
Have we gotten this, the, is there four other?
Not received those four area plans from the consultants yet.
Is there a timetable on that, so we could move?
There wasn't necessarily a timetable on that. They told us that they would get us those shortly, a couple weeks ago, and we still haven't received them. But we'll follow up with them again to make sure we get them.
Okay. Are you going to send out a notice of, of meeting with alternate dates, because December's kind of a busy month, or?
Yeah, and it could be December, it could be early January.
Okay.
I'll, I'll definitely, in advance, in advance, I'll send out a doodle poll to make sure we get a date that works for most everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we want to feel comfortable that, you know, we're going to be able to provide you with a product for your review prior to the meeting.
Yeah, we don't want something to throw back. I mean, yeah, okay. Is there any other questions regarding the plan for me? Next item is the, excuse me, update on Lakeside Village Edition Tax Forfeit Notice, or forfeit lots, excuse me.
Okay. Well, I would like to kind of start out this as kind of a conversation piece. Has everybody had a chance to go at least drive by these lots and take a look at them? Would you mind going around individually and just throwing out what ideas you think would be amenable to those lots, or what you thought of the lots? That way, it gives us some ideas on how we should proceed. Anybody willing to start? Kate?
Sure. I think that really, they really look like they could be a challenge, more so because of the slope at the back of the lots and the railroad tracks right there. It's like a double whammy for making them difficult to, to use. But I certainly think that there's potential for, you know, as we talked about, small homes or shouses, you know, shed houses, or storage, storage buildings. I think there's, there's some potential there, so. So, those are my thoughts, but they are interesting shapes.
Thank you.
My thought was tiny houses. Is that what they're called? Tiny houses, tiny homes?
Smaller, smaller footprint homes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, the lots are, are difficult. I think tiny homes would be, be the way to go if there's enough interest.
Okay. Thanks, Bobby.
Slope is tricky. Smaller homes would be fine. I kind of tend... I kind of tend to even say that was kind of on the edge because of the tracks and vibration and noise that, that might be coming through. Storage buildings was my prime choice, I think, on that edge of the property. That was about it.
Okay. Dave, you, you weren't able to make the last meeting. Do you want, want me to give you a kind of a recap of what we're talking about here?
I'd say go, just, just go forward. I'm kind of picking up. I, I'm familiar with the area. I ride bike out there, you know, that, I, I think that area is past the point where the trains has to continually blow the damn whistle every time they cross, right? So there's a road crossing further down, but once they clear that, right behind there, they're not blowing their whistle anymore, right? Right, just at the crossing. So, but I would concur with the other assessments, given the size of those lots, that either, either small homes or, and/or commercial, like the storage buildings seem appropriate.
Thanks.
I tend to agree with that as well.
Okay.
I was wondering, there's a, a park closer to the street.
I don't have, I don't have a good map without Joe, but I can...
It's off to the right of the current map, right? But I was wondering, why couldn't you take that park space and turn it into developmental space and then repurpose these as a park space? Because, I mean, that park space is not deep, right? Or you allocate it a little differently so that you get the same amount. You develop a couple.
That's a good idea. Well, actually, I did have one more thought, and I know it's not part of the plan for out there, but that would be a great dog park. It's a long area, treed, not in anyone's backyard, but I like the idea of, you know, thinking about it as repurposing the park area.
If you're looking at, at the monitors here, that area that Joe was describing as city park space is highlighted in red right there.
Oh, there.
So you could get probably, what, four, four parcels or more out of that space and then repurpose the other stuff towards the green space, park, whatever, maybe?
Oh, that's a new, that's a new idea that I haven't...
Right.
That's a good idea, yeah.
It's a good idea. Great idea, because you got, yeah, you got a more desirable spot, and like you say, then you're running out of desirable spots.
So that's, this is, this is kind of a good lead-in to kind of the, the next part. So, Dave and I have been doing quite a bit of, I would say, quite a bit of research on the legal documents that, that are tied to these properties, and we've had discussions with the city attorney on how those legal documents are still in play. So there's, there's kind of three legal documents that we're looking at here. Number one is the Lakeside Village plant, which has one thing that we would have to address immediately, like you're talking about. On that plant, it has parkland, and so that would have to be addressed on the plat. The other documents are a development agreement between the Lakeside, Lakeside Village, or the MACs, and those developers of that property and the city of New Ulm. And then lastly, the covenants restrictions in agreements, which is through the Lakeside Village Association, they have stipulations as well regarding those properties. One of them, since we're talking smaller homes or potentially smaller homes or things like that, is that the minimum home size or residential building size is 1,200 square feet, in the covenants. Another thing in the covenants is it designates those lots that we're discussing here, those smaller lots over here, as R1, so they're supposed to be specifically single-family residential. And again, this is in the covenants. Another thing, too, that would have to, have to be addressed in those, in those covenants, if we were to change anything, is that the covenants say that if there's any changes to the covenants, that it has to be a minimum of 75% of the property owners have to agree to those changes, to make those changes in the covenants. So those are things we're trying to, trying to weigh out as, as we move forward here. I would note one thing on developing these smaller properties, the development agreement says that the assessments that are going to, the utility assessments that would go along with any further development to the west there, it's on a per-lot basis. So, for you to do something like tiny homes, like what was suggested, we have to think about those, those lot sizes, really the right lot sizes, if we're going to do tiny homes, or would you potentially think of something smaller if we're going on a per-lot basis? Because right now, we're looking at fairly high assessment costs for small lots where you could have a small home, so how do you make that something that's desirable and doesn't take people out of the market immediately? So those, those were a few things. There are 86 lots in this subdivision total.
Is the subdivision like all the way from the pavement, all the way back?
If I could take this with me, I would, but all, just, if you, if you watch, watch here, the subdivision runs from the railroad tracks, going north, all the way to this farm field, then heads west, there's, comes to a point down here, then back down south towards the railroad, and then follows the railroad. That's all part of the Lakeside Village subdivision.
I would note that the existing house that sits on 23rd North, it's Robert's House.
Right.
That's outside of the platted area.
Right. But it's also outside city limits.
Yes, it is.
It's kind of an island of its own out there.
Right. I would also note that the agreements that John talked about were adopted in 2005 and 2006, so that was at a time when, you know, we're looking at new construction taking place in this area.
I have a, you know, I really like Joe's suggestion, you know, turning it and swapping. How would that affect the agreement with the forfeiture of the land? What you're doing then is making that the park and, and, and taking the park away, and so does, does that change the forfeiture agreement that you have?
That's, that's definitely something that we would have to talk with the city attorney about.
Because that would be a big deal if I had forfeited the land and then you just flipped it.
Right, right. That's something we would have to talk with them about.
I would note that in the comp plan for, that was done in 2007, that there was another park that was proposed for this neighborhood, and it was on the east side of, what is, Lake Janessa.
Okay.
And the reason for that is that the current location really isn't centered, you know, it's on the edge, and everything around it, with the exception of Lakeside Village, is going to be, you know, commercial or industrial.
Right.
Or it's railroad. And so the idea was to try to push a park further to the east so that we could serve more residential areas. That was kind of the approach.
Yeah, we had a discussion at one time because the only other park near it is the, the Pollinator Park. Correct, okay.
So I think, you know, what are, what we would like to maybe, how we'd like to further this is, before we do a lot more work, because a lot of that work's going to involve legal counsel, it's going to involve a fairly substantial amount of time, we'd probably like to at least talk with the city council if they would also like us to pursue something like this, but I would also like, you know, more or less your blessings to move forward and look at some different options regarding this area, and if we should use our time to pursue something like that.
I have a question. When, when you said one of the hurdles is getting 75% of the current folks on, on board with it, how many people is that, or how many?
It's on a per-lot basis, so each lot would get a vote, so to speak.
Every lot?
So some lots are sold and there's nothing there, so you got owners, but they're not depicted because we don't see buildings, okay.
And some owners own multiple lots.
Sure. So they would get multiple votes?
Yes.
Because they have one vote per lot, okay.
If they're not sold, does the developer get those votes?
Well, every, every lot in this subdivision is either owned privately, city park, or it's tax-forfeited property.
So you don't, do you have any idea how many we're talking about from looking at this? You really can't get any idea?
I, I would say there, you know, John said there were 86 lots. I would, you know, we have the 10 that are tax-forfeited that we've been talking about. There might be a few others in some of those other locations. I think the...
Are sold. Was there anything or any structure there? Is it not be close to the state owning the majority of them yet, forfeited?
It's going to be close. North Star Builders owns almost all of these lots except one, all the way out to the edge. This is owned by the Rothmeiers, who own this property here and this property here. Yes, this, the tax-forfeited parcels, there's 10 of them.
But the, but the North Star Builders, is that who owns this? They still get votes for whatever lots?
So there isn't necessarily one developer out here. North Star Builders is just the developer that purchased these individual lots.
Okay, yeah.
But each, it's our understanding that each property owner for each lot gets one vote.
So there's somewhere between 50 and 80 is the number, what does it?
Well, there potentially could be 86, because that's the number of lots.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
And these old lots here, there's some sold, and there's some developer that owns all these lots also. Here, section over here. There's two bigger developers out there that own multiple lots.
Like, like, that developer would then get one vote per lot.
Per lot.
So there's 86 votes, the city would probably get 10 because of the forfeiture ones.
It would be the state or the county.
Or county. But I mean, there's a vote for every lot.
Yeah.
So it's roughly 86 votes out there. It's just so some people get to vote multiple times and some do not.
Okay. Any more questions? I would, it would be my opinion that I would support this going to the council and you doing further work on it. Is the rest of the commission in agreement with that, further pursuant of the?
I think it sounds like we have a lot of hurdles and we need a lot more information. Yeah, I'd agree.
Yeah, what would be the alternative? If, if the city council said, no, we don't, we, let's hold off on that, then what would happen with these lots? They would just sit there and?
Right.
More than likely, or someday someone might pick them up, since they are currently a dollar apiece, and decide, well, they're going to take a shot at developing them as single-family residences that meet the criteria that are set forth in the covenants. But that hasn't happened in 13 years, so.
1,200 seems like a large square footage for these size of lots. That just doesn't seem like it would, it would work.
I'm guessing the goal of that back in the day was to make sure that the, the development had the same look and feel and all that stuff, right?
But you would think that the association would realize that there are different sized lots in their, in their...
Why didn't they move that?
Well, it'd probably be in their best interest as overall to, to revamp their, their covenants because, because if you can fill those lots and, 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 you know, it, it might open up and create more, more progress in that area. You know, if the covenants were updated to allow for the, the modernization or the, you know, so it might allow them to, to benefit from that per se.
I, I would note that the, it does not appear that the association is active at the present time, but it also appears that, you know, an individual could, you know, decide that they wanted to pursue an amendment and then take the steps necessary for that change to be made to the covenant. So it does not appear that it would necessarily have to go through the association.
Well, and could a developer combine two of these lots, ask, ask to have the lots combined?
That's a good question. The, the way it currently reads is 1,200 square feet, you know, per lot, so that would have to be addressed somehow.
Right. But you know what I mean, if you...
Buy two lots and build, build 2,400 square feet, 1,200 on each side of that line, and down the middle, you fit the, you're meeting the criteria.
It's a long skinny home, yeah.
But why couldn't it be two lots with a 1,200 square foot house?
Because it says 1,200 square feet per lot.
Right.
But it could be three stories high, yeah.
The other thing that would note is that, you know, until this matter is, is resolved, we have a situation where, you know, the extension of utilities is probably not going to take place because there's, appears to be only one side of the property that can be developed, and yet the regulations require that the assessments be on a per-lot basis, so, you know, if Brown County were to remain the owner, you know, they would end up with, you know, having to pay those assessments. And, you know, and that really then stops any further development being able to take place to the north. And there actually are some nice parcels of property to the north for development, or, you know, for residential development purposes.
Yeah, the, there's a couple of them sold on, on that development map that's out there, though end ones are sold already.
Yeah.
So, they're probably, yeah. Not sure which ones exactly, but...
I, I was talking about the, if you see where the road is, if you take that road further to the north across, there's kind of a culvert in there, further to the north, John.
This way?
No, to the left.
That's west.
Keep going, keep going. Yeah, in that area. Now, that's a long ways off.
Yeah. Well, do you have your question answered, John, as to whether or not you're going to pursue, or?
Well, I think Dave and I would also bring this in front of the city council, potentially at a work session to discuss with them the situation here as well, before we, before we put a whole bunch of extra time into it.
Well, it would just, it would be nice to see some action taken to, I mean, there was a lot, has been a lot of time put into trying to sell and trying to market this property, which has kind of just been sitting there for the last 10 years. It would be nice to see some action, some progress happening in that subdivision, so. Moving on. City council decisions concerning... City Council decisions concerning planning commission matters in October 2023?
Okay, this is actually from the November meetings. We, at the November 7th meeting, council adopted a transportation plan. That was kind of collaboration of the Heart of New Ulms and some other interested groups, and that's perhaps something that we can share with you at your next meeting, maybe have a short conversation about it. Approved with conditions, a preliminary plat of Alliance Bank First Edition. They adopted ordinance number 2023-075 regarding the keeping of chickens and allowance of goats for prescribed grazing purposes. Adopted ordinance number 2023-075 establishing a stormwater utility fee. So this is a fee that will show up on future utility bills. The money would be used solely for the purpose of stormwater improvement, possibly a staff position associated with the requirements that are now in place, reporting requirement. They approved a purchase agreement for the sale of a lot in the Airport Industrial Park Third Edition. That's in the vicinity of Walmart, where sale hopefully will take place yet this year. And then they are going to convene the charter commission to take a look at the city code and, or actually the charter, I guess, again. At the November 21st meeting, they approved city engineers' five-year capital improvement plan. That would conclude the.
Thank you. Heritage Preservation Commission activities, Ellen?
Yeah, we had two design reviews, one for Gypsy Girl and Lily Gyp, Little Gypsy Girl and the Old Retzloff Building for the sign and oning, and then a gentleman approached us about putting a historical marker for the New Ulm post, which took up the spot where the city parking lot is between the laundromat and the old Thrifty White Building. He's proposing that. We need to get some more information. The, the HPC accepted that. It now has to go in front of Monuments and Cemeteries Commission, hand back to HPC for the verbiage that they want to put on the sign.
Where is that going to go? In the little parklet area or in the parking lot?
Right, there's, yeah, there's two bump outs on either side, so probably in one of those spots if, if it goes through, so.
Okay.
And, so it's not, again, I had contacted the local historian, Elroy Ubo, and it also was built in 1861 and survived the Sioux uprising, so with Jacob Nix, or Jacob Flick, who owned the building at that time, so there's a little more history than just the post there, so, but that's where that's at.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there any other business to come before the commission? If not, thank you, and we stand adjourned.
Thank you.